Get your mic on.
Who's the president?
Corey, Ryan, Hunter on line.
This is the Town of Berlin zoning board of appeals for June 24th.
Tony, get your mic on.
And my name is Tony Frank Langio. We've got Mike Simonetti here live.
And we also have.
Much better.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We also have Corey Whiteside, Ryan Zelik and Hunter Methena. On Zoom. Am I correct, folks?
Yep. Yes.
What about Kristen Zelman? Is she, she's here? Okay. It's not Zelman anymore. Kristen Grabowski. Okay. Basically, what we do at the zoning board of appeals is we hear the applications in the order that they're received. And once we get the applications and you get an opportunity to come up and present your application. We ask, have a question and answer session during the new business portion of the meeting. And the question and answer session is to get more information on the table. So that, you know, the commission members can vote on the application at hand. Once we hear all the applications in the new business portion of the meeting. We go into old business and we vote on the applications and there's only one. Meeting.
In Austin.
If we, if we have anything to say, or if you have anything to say, or if there's any, you know, information that needs to be sorted out. It has to be done during the new business portion of the meeting. We can't introduce any new information when we go into old business. So that's just a caveat. As, as far as the applications go, you're, you're asked to come up, sign your name in and you can use the microphone over there. And I think the microphone works pretty good. I don't know if you can hear me, but. Microphone is. Works somewhat pretty well, I guess. Is it? Is it okay?
Yeah.
All right.
You sound great.
Sound good?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll go into the first application then. The first application is ZBA 2025 06 261 Kensington Road. Map nine dash three, block 52, lot seven. Emily Fisher, Dogma Dogs LLC is requesting a use variance to allow a doggy, a dog daycare within an industrial building per Berlin zoning regulation 15A4. Property is owned by 261 Kensington Road LLC and is located in a general industrial zone. Speaking for the application. Sign in, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Is this better? Oh, I can hear. Um, so I'm Emily and I am hoping to open a dog daycare at 261 Kensington Road, which is the building just across from the town hall campus. I have been searching to open a dog daycare for a year now and I've been looking for a space that is big, open sort of cavernous space to allow dogs to run around. And 261 is a great option for us. And not only that, but it is something that I think the town of Berlin wants and needs. With the town of 21,000 people, I think the only dog daycare center you have is the dog daycare and boarding bark resort. Um, over by Home Depot, but that's on the edge of town and this would offer something to the people in the center of town. And a little about me, I'm not just a business owner who wants to open a dog daycare, but a dog professional and expert. I've been working with dogs for 20 years, certified as a dog trainer and behaviorist. I managed a dog daycare for five years. I opened my own pet sitting business in 2013. I even in college worked for Janet at the Dirty Dog. So I've been in dog rescue for 15 years. So, you know, I eat, sleep and breathe dog. What I love about 261 Kensington also is that while some dog daycares only offer one play space for all dogs to come there, that one could offer three to four spaces. Which offers a lot of options for dog owners because sometimes it's better for dog play groups to be smaller, to be separated. And I just want to offer an asset to the town and to the neighborhood and be a space that people like and like to talk about and you know, dog daycares are a fun space. Oftentimes our dogs are our favorite family members and we want a space for them to have fun and, and love to go and socialize. And that said, like the safety is my number one priority and you know, the, the the ability to offer those safe environments, the clean environments, temperature control for the dogs. Think about it on like a day like today. And the business would be even though it's on that main road, it's not really a spot where patrons linger. It's more of a drop off and go and a pick up and go. So the only cars really during the day would be like the four to five employee cars. Otherwise it's more of like a loading and unloading space. So that's my overall. Does, there's a questions now?
Does anybody have any questions? Sure.
Yeah, Ms. Fisher, we'll get to the staff comments, but it mentions the investment. What kind of investment do you have planned for the renovation space?
I'm guessing the renovation will be 200,000.
Wow.
So are you doing that or is the landlord doing that?
Um, well, the landlord definitely has a job to do inside because it probably hasn't been touched in 40 years. So you're talking like basics, new HVAC and some plumbing and insulation and ripping down some walls. But as far as outfitting it the way I need it, will also take considerable amount of work.
Are there certain health codes that have to be
Yes.
addressed with a building like that to do for animals? And is that going to be done by you or the property owners?
Um, me. Yeah. So I would have to meet, meet the state codes, which no, it's just mostly drainage and obviously waste removal and making sure all the dogs are up to date on their vaccines and there's no overnight. So I don't have to worry about the kennel space.
Oh, so this is not going to be
Not boarding. It's just daytime operations. So we're gone by the end of the night.
Is there any issue? Does anybody approach you with any issues about noise or anything like that?
Um, I do want to have an outdoor space. There is sort of like an open space on the south side of the building. It would be nice to have to allow the dogs to get fresh air, but they wouldn't be out there all day. I don't know what the town specific regulations are, but higher fence would definitely help or, you know, soundproofing the fence itself to deflect the noise. But again, like if we're gone by 6:00 PM. It shouldn't disturb people at night trying to relax or sleep. You know, I know I do business with a few people in town and despite that, you know, they'd rather have it than not have it. Even people, I have people as far as Day Street in New Britain who right now go to Newington because that's the closest one who would rather come here. Southington even, because it's not that far now down Norton Road and all that.
But would that be a detriment to the parking? Cause I'm looking at Chris's letter here about being very concerned with the need for, for parking. If you're taking more of the parking. How are you going to enter for 60%? Paul, can you address that? In, in the letter to the town. After the bullet points, it says here, I would be very concerned that, that a use such as manufacturing could work there due to needs of parking. Will that be extended to her business as well? Or is that just based on?
That would be mostly for a new site plan. Are you proposing ad parking there at all or? That would be more of a question and bring up with the, the other staff.
Mike, I'll ask you to turn on your microphone too, please.
Oh, mine was off. Sorry. Sorry. My question was in, in Chris's letter, it said he was
Yeah, I heard it. Yeah.
For the years.
I heard it. It was just
Okay. So if we're doing something for outside for the dogs, does that affect the amount of parking spaces for that building?
I think we go by use too. So with new building construction, you have to meet a certain requirement. And when we have different uses, can apply other parking requirements for that.
The, and I'm Chris Edge, sorry, 240 Kensington Road. Yeah. My, my concern was the uses that are currently listed. At the moment, because of the nature of the business, that it's really a drop off, come back, pick up and go. I don't see a lot of cars staying. There will be employee parking and I think the area she's talking about for outside would likely be fenced in. The good news is there are a couple of parcels there that are currently actually been covered with trees for years for parking. Again, I, even if it grows, I don't know how many people that she would have, but I know too, one of the things that, that we're going to be doing again. If this moves ahead is to look at what other towns and other operations have done with parking. Because we don't currently have this as a use in the book, so we don't have a parking regulation. So I think from that standpoint, because of the nature of the business, it's not going to be as parking intensive as some of the other uses. Uh, and I know talking to the property owner, saving part of it for reuse and then anything else beyond that is something they want to do. But yeah, I'd say I don't see again, needing 31 spaces at, at any time because again, most people are popping in. How many employees do you think you'll have when I let you back up?
Four, five, including me at any given time.
What's the maximum number of?
Yeah. What is the business plan that we like? So normally when we see like, you know, when a bar comes in and they want to do an outside patio, they show us the outside patio and then does it affect the parking, et cetera, et cetera? Do we have that as a visual so we can? Do you have that, Paul?
Oh, they haven't got that.
We haven't gotten that far. We're even in contract with the owner yet.
Oh, okay.
Going to see if you guys will allow it because there's no regulations in Berlin as far as dog daycare at all. So we're trying to figure out where can we, if we can, put one. Have we put it in a general industry building?
Does this have to go through planning and zoning after it goes through us?
I mean, no, it would be more of a staff thing, but
Okay.
But if anything, the, if the commission would have to weigh in, would be if there was an issue with standard for parking that we don't have maybe. I'm looking at some of the other uses like kennels or the veterinarian hospitals. Have one per employee and then one per 400 square foot. But we could kind of try to apply that. Then you got commercial recreational facilities and that's determined by the commission. Depends on how we categorize that use.
So you haven't signed a lease or anything with them?
As far as things go in terms of
You want to sign in?
Yeah, it's assigned in too.
Did you name? Oh, yeah. Yes. I'm Andrew Jackson. I'm out of town. I'm from Nine Clubhouse Drive in Cromwell. So I'm a real estate agent. As far as things go, we've been trying to first establish this before we kind of move on as far as the steps that we wanted to take. Where we're at right now in the process is that like money and finances are going to be involved. So before we get financing involved, we wanted to make sure that the town approves her, her business to begin. So that's why we started with this process first. With other towns, they've essentially had language specific. And this is the only town that doesn't have any language specific as far as what, where dog uses can go. For other towns such as West Hartford, Rocky, how they have specific language for commercial and industrial. So
Or like this type of use?
Yeah, for this type of use. So that's Yeah, West Hartford.
Cause I think the biggest thing, when we get these cases that come up to us, it becomes a matter of, you know, uh, parking, uh, the site use, what's, you know, people going in and out. You talk about, you know, okay, well, people are just dropping off. Well, they still have to park their car, you know, if everyone's coming at 5:15 to pick up their dogs. They still have to park their car. So then it becomes a matter of like, okay, you're using this building, which it's funny, as I was just pulling up, I was looking at it because the other side, they were doing some, I don't know, there was a construction company off to the left now, or a contracting company that's annexed that, that side of it. And I was like, oh, finally. Listen, I'm all for, I know Chris is, you know, for all businesses in, it just, you know, the burden falls on us and making sure that, you know, everything is appropriate of like, hey, we want to do this. Okay. Well, how big? What's, you know, it's like.
So ba- based on, as far as examples of things that we were thinking about is that front entrance area. We were thinking of kind of like a horseshoe. So where that way you don't need to utilize as much parking spaces and people don't need to walk to and from creating a lot of traffic. We were thinking more of a horseshoe shape that'll allow people to kind of come in, pick up, drop off, move out, to be able to keep the flow of traffic going. And like I said, if we needed to have, you know, extra parking spaces, like I said, there's that side on the right hand side of the building. Where there's already parking space to begin with. We are going to utilize some of that towards the outside play, play yard area. Majority of that was going to be utilized for
So I guess the, Paul, isn't the, the biggest factor then for something like this, isn't it the? I mean, wouldn't the building owners be a, be a part of this to say like, hey, you know, you know, if we do this, we're going to sign a 25 year lease so she can do this. Rather than they want to do a business, hooray, we want business in town. But then, you know, just like we had down the street at Berlin Turnpike last year, where it was gone the next day after, you know, uh, months in here of back and forth of like, okay, so what do you guys want to do? Like, we have to follow the letter of the law. We also have to like, make sure that it's safe people going in and out because that road isn't exactly a side street. So it then becomes a matter of like, you know, you guys are coming in and we want to do a doggy daycare. We're going to have 200 kennels. You know, okay. So that means potentially there could be 200 pickups in a day. So that's like kind of, I think would be a determining factor of, you know, can it be done based on, I don't know the square footage of the parking lot. And are you planning on occupying the entire building or are they just talking about like, we're going to do the ground floor?
Currently, right now, she's only going to be taking up half of this space, which is about anywhere 8,000 square feet.
Okay.
So she'd be taking the, the right side of the building. And then with operations hopefully successful, she'd be hopefully taking the rest of it. And that's like I said, as time goes on, it's kind of figuring out and navigating that. But like I said, the owner, it's hard to ask the owner to put money out without an approval from
Right.
So that's later. That's what like, we're trying to find like a kind of counterbalance. Like we're, we're willing to work and figure out what we need to, to get in order to get those things accomplished, but it's figuring out, you know, you know, how many, how, how many do you feel like you would need? Because we, there's a number that we kind of started off, she understands exactly how many dogs she'd like to have.
Of course.
It's not where she'd like to be at.
No, no, I'm just
Yeah, but I know, I know. I'm just
Well, it's, what's the maximum number? It's a, I mean, it's for 8,000 square feet.
About 40, 70, um, square foot for a dog. Which I think the capacity said there could be as many as 90, but I'm looking at 60.
Anything from you, Paul? You're a smart one here.
Yeah.
Just confirming, there's no site plan anywhere to look at?
No. So I was just trying to pull up at least anything I asked.
My, my concern is where's the the traffic flow here, the pick up and drop off.
Oh, okay.
Everything on Google, just dead heads in the little parking fields.
That's that top end here, the driveway, that's the current loading dock area. The next one is at the front door. And then at the end, the bottom is, that's probably where
It was parking lot. Now it's overgrown. It was a gravel parking.
I'll change the Now it's, it's all vegetation, but there's an old driveway here.
Yeah, the section that
So that's where I'm trying to, if we look at the other towns, get an idea of how they categorize it and what standard they hold them to. Right now, the regulation we have, I'm just looking at, because we don't have that type of use. You know, the closest thing would be the commercial kennel, in my opinion, unless they, the commission can determine a different standard. Which might be the case we will have to do is speak with them and try to reference the other towns regulations.
My thoughts were when we were having a discussion was that it, let's say tonight, the, the use is approved, that it would likely go to planning and zoning commission for a site plan approval, because I think there are a lot of pieces here that are involved. There's the safety of the dogs, there's the traffic, there's the, I think you had, you had said commissioner, which was the flow. How is it going to kind of work?
Yeah.
And I, and I think the drive in and drive out kind of like, it wouldn't be a use, there's not enough room for
Would the driveway entrance be directly across from the town hall drive as I'm looking at it on the street?
No, I don't
It's on the other side of the smaller building? So take a right and then it's, okay.
It's, it's almost directly across from the house right there, the, the front door of the house, almost where town hall
Oh, I see it.
Adjacent to the loading dock.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, the, the entire field to, to the right of the building is essentially overgrown that the idea there would be parking. And essentially again, would be to pave a little bit more of the front, come in and have a flow coming through with it in itself. I know that
So this driveway apron that goes to all this grass, that's all overgrown driveway?
Yes. Everything to the right of the building is all overgrown. It's, it's trees, shrubs, what have you, that have not been touched for many, many years. Yeah, there, and, and as it keeps going down, there's probably another three tenths of an acre that aren't even included on the building lot itself that are further down.
It's like forest land. There's like a driveway apron, a sidewalk and then a forest.
Yeah.
Ah, it's all right.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
I'd wait just like a
Clean that up in two hours.
We'll get, we'll, we'll get, we'll get stacks next door to come on out and just rip shit up.
That's easy.
Right across street is just a town, the town lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I mean, a couple of things I wanted to mention, um, not related to the questions is the one, we don't have a doggy daycare in the book. Two, it's been vacant for quite a while. I know it's been on the market for about two plus years and it's been a huge challenge. The uses that make the most sense, for instance, self-storage. Great idea. Property owner at this point refuses to sell. No one's going to spend $3 million to make it a self-storage and lease a building. Because of the nature of, again, the section that, that Emily's looking at is, it's very low ceiling.
Yeah.
Which does not work in any way, shape or form. And really right now, it is really, you think about it, except for the one to the left, it really is a residential zone. It's actually town hall and houses. And I think that, as I said in the, in the letter, the main uses that you would mostly see in the marketplace, which would be the warehouse or manufacturing, they could both be very challenging. And truthfully, I'm not sure how you get an 18 wheeler without having half of the 18 wheeler in the middle of Kensington Road.
Yeah, no.
At this point. And I, I think when you look at it, they're definitely it has challenges that can't easily be overcome between the, the ceiling heights and the fact that it really is to a large degree, and almost an obsolete building. The, the nice
And behind is the railroad tracks, right?
It is. It's a railroad track.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a thin site. So really even, because I know if you look at the other general industrial uses, many of them, um, including right next door, they use the outside space. This has no outside space.
Yeah.
That's another piece of it. And, and I think that this can make a lot of sense and doesn't necessarily need a lot of outside space. Could be a little bit for the dogs.
No, of course.
At this point. And it's interesting because I was kind of realizing the fact that we had had a large we had a large back and forth and, and now have the doggy over on Bristol Creek, which
Yeah, I remember that.
Says a lot about a kind of, I'm not sure which would be higher in people's minds in Berlin, their sports or their dogs. I think probably, probably the dogs. Or the grand dog. Um, so I think it makes sense. I mean, and it's nice for the fact that it is commercial business, but does cater to so, and that's why I think it can make a lot of sense. And then it will, no question about it, there is going to be a major investment in right now. Yeah. Simple things such as bathrooms and things like that, which is going to be landlord issues and again, I I'm hopeful because it is a building that I think we all know that for many, many years, nothing had happened there. And then there was probably a good five years of emptying a little bit of everything and, and it is, it, it's great spot, tough building. And I know from talking to Emily and some of the things that she's done. It can be a great opportunity. So I don't have any questions for me, but I just wanted to kind of mention a couple of those things.
Is it the specific request that we approve a variance from GI to GC?
No, it's just to allow a use variance for those type of use to be allowed there in a zone.
So it's just specific to this business?
Yes.
To operate in a, in a, in this GI categorized property?
That's correct. But yeah, basically saying you can do it at 261 Kensington Road, nowhere else. That's all this, you were able to, that's all you're doing.
Yeah. Well, I tend to also resonate with, you know, I, I don't know if it's really our purview to be talking about parking when it's really just the request for the, the variance for the and, and if it is staff and then maybe planning and zoning or any kind of, I mean, because they're going to have to give full permits to do all this work. And that'll be a planning and zoning issue then. But they have to comply with, you know, the, I mean, you get, you, the staff will have to figure out what uh, compliance will be necessary for the parking and for any other flow or any other building occupancy decisions.
Correct.
So I think it's just, you know, kind of a simple issue of whether we agree with the hardship presentation and whether we think it's a, it's a good developmental use of the, of the property.
Ryan here just want to speak real quick. Um, I think this is a good use. I have two rescue dogs here at home. I always wondered why we didn't have something like this in town. But yeah, just it's, I understand what we have to vote on. It just, you know, staff, I think would be, be nice to see just a basic site plan with the parking and traffic flow would look like. But that's not our responsibility.
Cause it is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, it is, I guess, but just, it's just hard to
Yeah.
To vote without that. I mean, just some simple sketch of to vote without that. I mean, just some simple sketch of what it would look like. I just, that's my only concern is just the the pinch points in the traffic here, um, just the pickup and drop off. I'm building a couple of day daycares right now for kids. And I've built a couple of the uh the pet suites, you know, they're a chain, a chain, a doggy daycare chain, but they just have a little better traffic flow.
Yeah, we we had tried really hard to find anything. We were unable to find any site plans. The property owner was not actually able to be here tonight. I was hoping he'd be able to, because he so he specifically to it, because his family's owned the building for probably fifty years.
Mm hmm.
At this point.
And how long has it been vacant for?
I'm going to guess the last time I did anything there was probably in the early eighties, because I think it was there was a name on there, circuits or something else that they did, no, God, something controls in probably the early eighties.
I I got nothing else.
No, I don't, I'm good.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Staff comments?
Just doing some quick research. Well, a use that I found that is categorized under is a pet daycare facility, the best one I find. Saw animal related, categorizes them, other towns with boarding facilities, veterinarian hospitals, kennels, and then most of them are require a special permit for them to operate. More than likely, if we were to approve, you guys, excuse me, were to approve a use change or a use to come in, the planning and zoning will have to assess it at their discretion, the rest of the stuff, yeah.
Okay. Especially there's clearing and all that other stuff that got, there's a lot of work. God bless.
And the benefit, at least with the G I, is you have different setbacks to the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, any comments in favor of the application? Any comments in opposition to the application? Okay, we have to ask that on every application. Um, I'll make a motion to close the hearing on this application. If there's no other information that needs to be disseminated.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Inside, aye.
Zellik, aye.
Aye, Mike, aye, you second it.
Sorry.
Um was Hunter around still? Paul, you want to do a roll call?
Please, there, I just, of course, I gotta unmute his microphone.
Hi. Hi, could you hear me now? I've been muted the whole time. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor as well. I was uh, I was also thinking we could kind of also approve it with parameters um as well, based upon X amount, maximum of X amount of dogs, maximum load of cars, et cetera, if that was a concern. I don't think we have that concern right now, but um, that's also an avenue which to take to kind of protect the uh, protect the not to just give an open checkbook, I guess, if that was a concern.
Well, we'll go there planning and zoning, worry about that too.
But you have that option always as Z B A, because proven a variance.
Right.
All stipulations on it. That can kind of give E and Z something to work with.
Okay.
I don't see it being an issue, though, because my dog hasn't driven in years. She lost her license, so I think we'll.
You don't drive a Subaru, huh?
A doggy, you are.
No, no. She takes the train.
Okay. She could take the train right to the to the new uh dog kennel.
Right down the street.
Right behind.
Exactly.
Doggy daycare.
Okay, uh, well, we got a, we have a motion made, uh, seconded and approved, so we'll close the hearing on this application. Uh, next application is Z B A twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, one ninety-eight Lamentation Drive. Map twenty-two four, block one fifty-three, lot five sixty-eight. Gregory Myers is requesting a variance to allow a fourteen by twenty-four foot garage bay addition to encroach eleven and a half feet into the side yard setback, as shown on the submitted plans, where a twenty-foot setback is required per Berlin zoning regulation five eight ten in an R twenty-one zone. Speaking for the application must be Gregory Myers.
Good evening, board members. Uh, Greg Myers, one ninety-eight lamentation, requesting uh the variance for the uh garage addition to one bay, in addition to the existing two-car garage. Uh, with the hardship of the pie-shaped lot, uh, it's really hard to build anything as it approaches, you know, in both directions uh to the uh property line and the setback. The proposed uh structure is going to be a percent still within the twenty-foot required setback. And I'm requesting a a setback deviation of eight point five feet, but in reality, only one percent of the building is actually going to be um beyond ten feet. So it's like fifty percent within uh the twenty-foot calculation, and then basically the rest is within the uh ten foot, but there's just a small corner because of the pie-shaped lot. Uh, this lot also has significant elevation gain. The house sits above grade. Um, driveway kind of switchbacks down the slope. Um, and then the driveway existing pad in front of the garage uh is narrow because of a sloping yard. And it proposes uh poses the issue that when anyone tries to park a car either in the driveway or in front of the garage, it basically makes the leaving the garage inaccessible. And so the main hardship is, my wife works in healthcare, uh, she is a uh E R P A, and she has to do early morning shifts. Um, sometimes she gets called into the O R. And uh leaving, especially in the winter, has been problematic, because if any cars parked there, it's really hard to try to get your snow blow, which is as early as she leaves at like five A M, it's not really possible. Uh, so on occasion, even though she has all-wheel drive, she's tried to like sneak around a car, and it's caused her to slide uh kind of on the grass and off off the driveway, creating a a safety hazard. Uh, and so part of adding this third bay will allow a straight shot basically down the driveway, so the uh, there won't be any obstructions and uh, you'll be able to leave easier.
You have to put doors in front now?
Garage doors?
Yeah.
Of course. It's going to be, it's going to match the existing two-car garage.
Okay. Right there. Yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, that's exactly what I thought, yeah. I don't have any questions. Anybody else have any questions?
Oh, I I do have a question. Uh, it says here, um, for ever source, there's going to be a location of power lines.
Oh, well, this actually, this, the the way I've laid it out is the the least invasive to having to like relay out any power lines. So my power line will actually run in front of the structure. And uh, so one one thing that I thought maybe you guys would say is, well, why don't you bump out the garage more forward to kind of, but then it would cut right across the the power line there. And uh, there's no underground splicing, so you'd have to run a whole new line all the way back to the junction box across two people's yards. So that's really not a a possibility that creates more hardship for everyone. Yeah. So I think I've weighed it out so that the existing power line can remain, and uh, the one power box might just need to move like a foot uh forward on the building, but there should be enough slack that that can be done during excavation. Obviously with ever sources.
Not really following that. You're talking about an underground power line that's right there at the at the uh at the door, uh.
Yes, so I think I think basically at the right front corner of the garage is where my power comes in. And uh, since the new garage is going to be set back about two feet, um, it's going to leave that area alone, basically. And there should be enough margin to excavate kind of around it when you're doing the footers. Um, but it won't need to be disconnected and and to that is a whole other.
Oh, I see in the picture with the yellow, the red dotted line.
Yeah.
So it.
Yeah, if you're looking at.
Head to the corner. If you're looking at Google Maps.
There's the box right there.
Yeah, there, well, but there's the box, that's the electrical, that's obviously the neighbors that's cutting across from underground. That's what he's talking about, because that's their, that's ever sources access right there.
And in the picture, I do have solar, so there's a cou- a couple boxes there, but the solar boxes can be relocated very easily. Um, it's the main junction box coming into that feed that that ideally would remain in place.
Right. Good job. Wish they were all like this.
I joke, I mean, I'm an engineer by trade, and I felt like I was doing work putting this presentation together.
Anything from you, Paul?
Comments from staff?
Thank you. Staff comments, you're all set? Uh, make any comments in favor of the application? Comments in opposition to the application? Any other additional questions?
I I actually, I do have one question here. So because of the power line cutting across, excuse me. When they're digging concrete, they're not digging you know, you know, in this.
Yeah, so I've already done call before you dig, so I knew the exact line, and it comes up at an angle, so it it by a thirty-degree angle, but where I marked it is, I you could, I actually drew it right over where the call, where before you dig is. And so it does give enough room uh to use excavation near it, and then you might have to do some hand digging at, okay, you know, the last foot or something around it um for for those footers, but it does give the margin.
Yeah, because I was going to say, they're not digging right to that line to pour the cement. They still have to dig it back to do the form.
Yeah, and because that's why I set the garage back, the the eighteen to two, two feet, uh, that that should accomplish that.
Okay. That's it for me, Tony.
Okay. I'll make a motion to uh close the hearing on the application, if there are no other questions.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, probably want to take a roll?
Thanks, Semenato.
Aye.
Aye.
Hunter Mathena, aye.
Hunter Mathena, aye.
Ryan Zellik.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have one more application. Z B A twenty twenty-five oh eight, twenty-five Ronald Drive, map ten dash four, block one fifty-nine, lot one. Jonathan Adams is requesting a variance to allow a twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage addition to encroach fourteen feet into the front yard setback, as shown on submitted plans, where thirty-five feet is required per Berlin zoning regulation five eight ten in an R fifteen zone. Speaking for the application?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity for letting me speak to you guys tonight. I'm here with my wife Kayla, and I s- uh, we sincerely appreciate your time. I'm really a public speaker, so I apologize. I have to read off this paper here. Um, we're requesting a variance for our property at twenty-five Ronald Drive. We've been proud residents of the town for the past seven years, and we are deeply committed to continuing our life and raising our children in this wonderful community. Truly value our neighborhood and the relationships that we build all around us. Bad of mind, we're seeking approval to construct a two-car garage at our residence. We are requesting a variance due to our home being on a corner lot and also on a hill. The only feasible area is on our driveway side that faces the side street, Juniper Lane. This garage, my wife, daughter, and myself will have a secured area to enter and exit our vehicle safely during the winter months. Close garage will also provide additional storage as my family continues to grow. We understand that variances are only approved based on significant hardships, and our hardship is that our property is on a hill. With this request for a garage, the only way to construct this garage is the flat portion of our yard. Our surrounding neighbors have been very supported of supportive of this proposed plan, and their actual neighbors are actually here tonight. Uh, the garage will also not affect our neighbors that are a neighbor directly behind us. As this proposed garage will not encroach their property line. This addition has unlimited reasons as to how it will positively affect our family and our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
So the garage is is next to the little garage?
Yeah, so that's our garage currently.
Yep.
And honestly, the measurements, it doesn't even fit a car.
Yeah, it's not.
Honestly, just acts as a shed.
Yeah. Oh, there it is.
Yeah, it's, I didn't even know we had, they had a garage when we looked at us, so we pulled around the corner. I don't even think it was listed online, to be honest.
So where the white fence is where the garage is going to go, and then obviously that retaining wall.
Retaining wall will essentially be a foundation to the garage. And it will, it'll be a couple feet forward where that retaining wall is, so it's not going to stick as far out. I believe that retaining wall is like twenty-six feet. So it's only a couple feet that we're looking for, but it's not going to be as far out into general. We actually have, ended up taking photos too, where, I mean, it's not really a great drawing, but I just kind of did some lines here to give you a little bit better of a picture. It's kind of like where it would be, but essentially it'll be where we just saw.
That existing garage must be like eighteen feet, but it may be not even. Fifty-four, fifty-four, no. Well, essentially, you'd have a three-car garage.
Yeah. Pretty much as our storage that we have currently in there. We're unable to park a car.
Part of your basement.
Well, I should buy a Volkswagen.
And those were some photos I just took around town.
So are you doing a garage with an addition to the house?
We would, we would have to do, we were thinking about doing an addition as well, to just kind of be level with the house. So it won't obstruct any views, it won't be lower than our current house, it would just kind of be the existing structure at the same height. In order to make that happen, we would just add the room above it as well.
What's the current height?
Current height of our house.
We have the match.
Um, I don't have the exact dimensions.
But you can't go higher, unless you get a variance, but you don't, you can go higher.
I've just taken for something in the condition, so then we know at least the height of that structure is going to. Then we include it to, variance to include the per story.
Keep, put that picture back up again.
Of the house.
This is, this is right at the corner. So you can see on the, the survey, it looks like there's a lot of space open, but it's pretty much, as you said, a hill here.
Yeah.
But I'll go back to where the garage is.
Yeah, you'd have to incorporate that wall, okay, I guess it's.
She's right around the retaining wall, correct?
Oh, I didn't see that wall.
That's the uh, ten feet are the property line over here.
Yeah, good, okay, I got you.
So pretty much where my truck is there, just a garage, enclosed garage, a room above it.
So where the trailer and the pickup truck is where you're going to put the garage? Or is it going into the grass?
Kind of where I'm circling the area here, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to uh.
No, the way he has it drawn is that uh one bay matches the bay that's currently there, isn't it?
Well, no, it's it's backed, it's backed up about. Well, no, it's, it's backed, it's backed up about. Uh, I would say.
Well, it's offset.
It's backed up about ten feet, it's offset ten feet back from the uh.
Yeah, but it has to be to the, to the left of the chimney there and.
Wouldn't it be where you have your fences right now?
The fence, yes, yep, and then. Well, the fence, it'll be essentially, it's just the retaining.
Uh, it's not the way it's drawn and.
It's different on the drawing, the drawing shows the.
It's.
Drawing shows the garage farther back from the house.
Here in the drawing, it pretty much starts where that fence begin.
No.
Oh, no, no.
No, it starts with the house with, with the current.
Starts, starts close to the road, yeah. So I guess, current garage would be twenty-four feet behind the additional two bays.
No. Basically, the garage is going up against a retaining wall by the vinyl fence.
In the driveway.
We're looking at.
On the driveway itself and then obviously onto the grass.
Have looked from the other street, the other street side, then it'll make more sense. I can't flip it the other way.
Ronald Drive is.
So this, this is the Google shot that we're looking at now. The garage is here.
Right.
No, that's, I don't think so, because, well.
No.
Yeah, yeah, Ronald Drive is right here.
I know, I'm saying that the, the garage is in the back corner of the house, of the foundation. The under garage.
Yeah, cuz isn't.
Go back to your picture, it's, it's, it's in the rear, the rear of the.
Yeah, the garage is on, I thought the garage is on Juniper.
Yes.
Why does it say Prospect Street?
No, Propo Street.
Oh, Propo, oh.
That's an old.
It was before it was built. From the vision map, I can't see that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is Juniper down here.
Right where you see. The southernmost right corner of the building is where the garage is currently. You can see that here in, in the Google shot.
Um, yeah, sharing.
Oh, it's loading now.
Oh, there you go.
Right there, yeah.
So it would be to the left of the chimney.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna cover that existing bay.
Is it covering the existing bay?
The left of the bay.
It'll be in front of the existing bay, so pretty much where.
I see what you're saying now.
Left and the retaining wall is to the right, that would be the foundation of the proposed garage. So it would be offset from the house.
And you'll still have, like, you won't have to alter your steps, the steps will be.
Alter the steps, yep.
You will have to?
Uh, in order for them to incorporate the garage, we would have to just kick the steps out a few, or I would have to talk to. If this was to get approved, I would have to sell a contractor to see a couple layouts.
Where, where's Ronald Drive?
I see what you're saying, there is an error here, because.
Where's Ronald, where's, where's Ronald Drive?
That's the front door.
This.
That's what I thought.
This is Juniper.
This is Juniper.
Yeah, see, that's June, this is Juniper, since they're a corner house, that's, sorry.
Right.
Also, from the drawing, it does look like your blocking bay. The garage.
It would uh, be a two, so.
So you would have a tandem garage basically for that? And on the left side, it would just be a single car garage.
Yeah.
Essentially, cuz you're doing a two-car garage, but you're attaching it to the existing garage slash basement.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So now, Paul, wouldn't we be needing architectural or, I mean, how, do we approve with just drawings?
We can do it at least for the setback requirements.
Okay.
And then just, as I said, limited for the, the height of the structure and its intention.
Okay, okay, alright.
Paul, is he meeting this, the side? Setback with the ten feet? Cuz the, the request is only for the front yard setback variance.
R, R fifteen, we have ten feet.
So he's good, okay.
Good there, yeah.
Yeah, it's R fifteen.
Essentially, the side of our house, but.
Right.
Corner lot, corner lot of the street.
Okay, I got it now.
Got it?
We allow the developer to decide what's the rear lot, when they have a. Two front-facing, back to the property.
The side yard is twenty-five feet uh total.
Just pull it up here, um, so you can see it there.
It's twenty-five feet total, isn't it?
Twenty-five feet total, ten feet.
R fifteen? Twenty-five side, two total, total two, twenty-five feet, yeah, okay.
I mean, usually, just for, if the practice is the same, past practice, we've let them go with the, just the ten foot. When they have corner lots.
Yep.
They can't, most likely would never be able to meet twenty-five feet.
Well, no, I, yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, we, we gotta eliminate that requirement when they have like one side yard.
Okay.
You guys got me confused for a second, blocking the garage. I think some people do keep the other, the bay when you go into.
Pretty much just the basement.
Yeah, I got thrown off because of the street, but you know, because of Ronald Drive.
Okay. Any more questions?
I'm good.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm good.
Come on up to the podium. Sign your name. Comments in favor of the application? I think she is.
Yeah.
My name is Ginger Flynn, and I live across the street, diagonally across the street. And uh, we're very happy on our side of the street cuz we all have flat driveways on the left side of the street. Where our neighbors live, they either all slope lawns, there's slope driveways, and they are very treacherous. So we have no problem with what they want to do uh to maintain, cuz otherwise they're gonna, they might have to move. They're a growing family and we'd love to have them in the neighborhood, great neighbors, they're very helpful to us. So uh, as elderly neighbors, we rely on them sometimes, so just in support of them, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, was there any opposition for the people right, uh, it's not there anywhere, but next to uh, your driveway on Juniper Lane?
To the um, from the photo, the left side.
Yes.
House there, yep, we actually spoke to her a couple weeks ago. And she's very, very nice and she honestly said, whatever you guys would like to do, it does not affect us, I know she was going through, her husband had. Couple uh, health issues, I think he recently passed as well. She mentioned it, she said, this is honestly our concern and we're happy with whatever, whatever you guys do, it's not gonna affect their view or anything.
Good, cool. Thank you. Any additional comments? Any comments in opposition? We have comments in favor of the application, comments in opposition, staff comments?
Staff comments.
Why'd you keep quiet, huh? Okay.
I mean, it's all covered.
Um.
Have to remain biased or unbiased.
I don't know if there are any other questions, I, I don't think we have any more questions, thank you. I'll make a motion to close the hearing on the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Paul, you wanna take a roll?
Michael Semeneta?
Aye.
Hunter Mathena?
Aye.
Ryan Zelik?
Aye.
All fine.
Okay. All the eyes have it.
Alright.
Alright, uh, going back into whole business. Our first application, ZBA twenty twenty five oh six, two sixty-one Kensington Road, map nine dash three, block fifty-two, lot seven. Uh, Emily Fisher Dogma Dogs LLC is requesting a use variance to allow dog daycare. Within an industrial building per Berlin zoning regulation fifteen A four, the property is owned by two sixty-one Kensington Road LLC. And is located in a GI zone. Do I have a motion to, to approve this application?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Uh, to approve with staff recommendation stipulations? There's conditions that staff recommended, uh, is it just the motion or is it motion with condition?
Comments were made on the uh, staff comments, I'll read through them. The variance to apply only to the proposed dog daycare or animal pet daycare facility. Then any future use remaining, any future use remaining space in buildings shall require additional review and approval. Someone else occupies the other half of the building, will have to comply with regulations. Then all site improvements, pretty much we have to go through zoning and building requirements, we reviewed some stuff.
So, uh, Cory.
Incorporate that into your motion and I second that.
We can incorporate that into the motion and uh, since we don't have any, we don't have any expertise on dog daycare. Uh, it's probably worthwhile to incorporate that into the motion, so we don't uh, uh, mess up in the future. Maybe.
Yes, second.
You're still, while you're, it'll still be here.
Now. Um, we have a motion, okay, it was motion made and seconded, um. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And Hunter?
Aye.
Zelik, aye.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that, that's approved, that's closed. Yeah, that's great, thank you. Uh, ZBA twenty twenty five oh seven, one ninety-eight Lamentation Drive, map twenty-two dash four, block one fifty-three. Lot five sixty-eight, Gregory Myers is requesting a variance to allow fourteen by twenty-four foot garage bay addition to encroach eleven and a half feet into the side yard setback. As shown on the submitted plans, where a twenty-foot setback is required per Berlin zoning regulation five eight ten and in our twenty-one zone. I'll make a motion to approve this application.
I'll second it.
I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, uh, Paul, can you take a? Roll call?
Ryan Zelik?
Brian?
Approved motion?
Oh, sorry, I thought I heard Hunter, yeah, Zelik approved, aye.
Hunter Mathena?
Hunter, aye.
Aye, Cory Whiteside?
Aye.
All fine?
That's all five, okay, that's approved. And the last application, ZBA twenty twenty five dash oh eight, twenty-five Ronald Drive, map ten dash four, block one fifty-nine, lot one. Uh, Jonathan Adams is requesting a variance to allow a twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage addition to encroach. Fourteen feet into the front yard setback as shown on submitted plans. Where thirty-five feet is required per Berlin zoning regulation five eight ten and in our fifteen zone, and this is a, this is just the uh. We're basically um approving the encroachment. I'll make a motion to approve that application.
I'll second, Hunter?
Any discussion?
Michael Semeneta?
Aye.
Ryan Zelik?
Aye.
Cory Whiteside?
Aye.
That's approved. Nobody was spitting tonight, everything is unanimous. Good.
Okay. Good luck with everything, guys.
Yeah, good luck.
So staff has to complete all of the administrative parts of it, where we send a notice to newspaper, we have to publicize it. People have fourteen days to appeal it if they wish. Um, then we also create the decision letter, which you'll have to pick up and get a file at the town clerk's office. In a week, give me a call or email and then I'll tell you. Yeah, so when you get that decision letter, you have to file it within a year, at a date where it was approved, or else filed, avoid, yep. Sixty-dollar filing.
Okay, uh. I think we're all set with that, but the only other thing that we have on the agenda is the uh, approval of the minutes for March twenty-fifth. And, you know.
We skipped.
That was my mistake, I put April in the agenda, but it's March.
It's March, March minutes. Right, but you know, Ryan was here, Cory was here, Mike was here, I was here, uh, Hunter was, was not here, but.
Christine and.
Christine was here.
Yeah, Christine and.
It's enough to move.
Yeah, four's enough.
Yeah, yeah.
But you know, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for uh, March.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Zelik, aye.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Mission business, uh, where do we stand with uh, Mike on your little project to uh. To become more than an alternate?
Uh, I was gonna uh, uh, broach that subject with Maureen, um, you, you have to be a. A full-time member in order to get elected to an office here. And Michael, Michael's an alternate.
Right.
And um, we, we do have a, a Ryan Mattson, I think, who's a full-time member, but I haven't seen him in, in dogs age.
Right, yeah, you have to get him to.
And uh, I'm wondering if I can go back to Maureen, if she, I, I think I've asked her this once before. Uh, but I think it would be her, her responsibility, I, I, and I'm not trying to just dump it on her, but I. I think it would be her this responsibility to go back and talk to the town council. And, and, and make that recommendation to make the change, so that Mike could have a permanent uh, seat on the commission. Um, I, I don't know if you're all agreeing, in agreement with that, but if you are. We can, we can draft Paulie to, to talk to Maureen and see if we can uh, get the town council to uh, to make some kind of decision on that.
I mean, it looks, the conversation with the town clerk, it seems like. He want like a volun- voluntary, um.
Resignation?
Want them, yeah, resignation, pretty much.
Well, yeah, cuz I asked Sandy on city council, who, who, you know, nominated me for this and I.
Applied for an alternate position at the time, right?
I'm sorry?
You applied for the board, wasn't it, was it stated that it was an alternate position, alternate position, or was it?
They didn't say that.
Okay.
And, but like, you know, when we had talked about it, so Sandy said, go to the town clerk, the town clerk said, you have to talk to the other members. You know, for someone to step down to an alternate, and I was like, oh, okay, so we just came back to the same spot.
The town clerk, she, Kate Wall, at least told me that. He won't just allow, like, Ryan's been on for a while too, and you would think, if someone else steps down, he'd go right in. But then, I think Hunter, I mean, maybe Ryan Mattson came in after, was right, pointed right, um. Automatically pointed as a regular seat. But it looks like it doesn't just kinda shift you up, you have to, they have to apply directly.
Yeah, you gotta apply and they gotta, town council's gotta.
Have to approve it, yep.
I, I don't understand why.
I mean, you could probably try to get town council, town council probably would have the final say to say, hey.
Well, there are attendance, there, there's attendance requirements or expectations.
Exactly, so town clerk's usually up, up on them. I mean, so the option could be just to write a letter to the town council telling them this is what we would like to see, at least. Instead of getting rid of the member, just make them an alternate, have to switch position and just ask them what's, what's the process for us to do that.
Well, that was mentioned to him and, yeah.
Well, I said, but if they're not showing up or even responding or making an effort, that's what I said, just write a letter to town council and ask them to, hey, we want you guys to spearhead this change. I think it would be the board, yeah, cuz they, in some cases, they require the board chairs and members to find the alternate people.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I can't hear you.
Uh, she doesn't tend to town council, usually, unless it's required. Uh, she doesn't tend to town council, usually, unless it's required. I mean, at least we could send it directly to, yeah, yeah, we can give it to town manager's office or town clerk, cuz she's probably the one, cuz she keeps account of attendance. Oh, yeah. Town clerk, at least, she's in charge of keeping track of all the attendance of the, the board members. Yeah.
Can't hear you, Tony. His mic's off.
No, I just want to, that might be made. Hunter, not Hunter, but, uh, Ryan, uh.
Alternate member, so if Ryan is an alternate member, then he's still on the commission, um, so he doesn't lose any stripes or anything, but at least Mike of being a permanent, permanent member could, could maybe take over, uh, the, uh, chairmanship at some point, cuz, uh, I'm getting gray hairs, I mean, I'm kinda like, you know.
Getting.
I wanted to retire three years ago, but.
Forty-two, forty-two now, or?
Forty-two, yeah.
Oh, my God. Yeah, forty-two years on the ZBA.
Alright, well, let me do that, I'll do that, we can adjourn tonight, and, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll take care of that, and I'll, I'll send something over to, uh, Maureen and.
So just CC, put Maureen, CC me, and then Kate Wall, town clerk.
Yeah.
At least we can.
Cuz we're not here in August.
Oh, August, we don't have.
Off in August, we have one more in July, and then after that would be, that's till September.
Yep, and then, I believe, meeting in December, right?
Not in December, September, October, November.
Yeah. Alright.
We'll keep Tony as long as we possibly can.
Well, Tony and I know Lenny also mentioned that maybe he wants.
He's on vacation.
I don't know.
Yeah, he's on vacation, alright, we'll do that, I mean, if we can, if we can do that, that'll be good. And then, uh, uh. You know, uh, I, I don't know, maybe I'm being selfish, but I mean, it's like, you know, it's, it's time that we maybe make some changes.
Yeah, succession plan.
Asking questions, I mean, he's good at asking questions, and, you know, he's good at, uh, you know, following up, so it's not, it's not a real big issue.
As long as those guys still show up.
Yeah, I know, well, that's the other thing too, but I think everybody shows up.
They're the smart ones.
Everybody shows up, but, uh, let's do that, and, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.